Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission meeting for May 22, 2018. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up the Reverend Robert Henderson from First Wesleyan Church to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So, anyone who wishes to join in prayer, please stand at this time. And Reverend, please.
Let's pray together. Dear wise and loving Father, Creator and Redeemer, we begin by saying thank you for your many and abundant blessings in our lives and for our city. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health each of us have to varying degrees, and for the sustaining grace and truth of Jesus Christ our Lord. Thank you for the opportunities that are availed here in our great city. Thank you for opening doors to new avenues and new ventures. All that we have and all that we are come from your hands of mercy. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibility. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject, the freedom to worship that this country is built on. Thank you for loving us and providing for us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern in the midst of conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and needs of our community, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy at their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved city. We would be amiss if we did not lift up the poor and needy of our communities. So often behind the doors and fences are hearts that are thirsty and hungry. I pray against the forces of evil that have gripped so many with addictions of all sorts. I pray against those who would abuse and take advantage of those who are weak. I pray against the violence that fights against truth and justice. I pray for those struggling to have the necessary finances to take care of their families and obligations. Please help all of us to see and hear those in hardship. Protect our safety and health workers, our police and fire departments, our EMS men and women. May your Holy Spirit empower them with strength and courage and wisdom in the face of their task. Thank you for each one of them. Again, thank you for Muskegon, Michigan. May we continue to strive towards beauty and justice that reflects your holiness. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and government.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German? Absent. Commissioner Rinsam-Savica?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Absent.
Thank you. Now, before we begin the regular proceedings, we have some recognitions to make. The City of Muskegon and the Muskegon Rotary Club is pleased to announce the winners of the 2018 Outstanding Citizen Award. This year's recipients are Ann Craig. Ann, are you here? Why don't you come on up, Ann? Craig and Jean Wirich. Is someone accepting their little gift for them tonight? Good evening. And Dr. Dick and Lynn Camps.[343.62][343.62](applause). Now, Ann Craig has been a board member for the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association for over 50 years. She's currently heading the New Roger Allison Garden, which turned a poorly maintained, empty lot into an area with access to fresh and healthy produce. Ann has helped expand the NNIAs and was instrumental in executing projects like improvements to Nelson Elementary Playground, scholarships, and youth employment program. While working on these projects, she also serves on the Police Review Board and as an election inspector. Now, not with us tonight are Jean and Craig Wirich. They have moved to Muskegon in 2013 and quickly joined United Way of the Lake Shore Program. The retired and senior volunteer program is their forte. They have contributed approximately 750 hours, which have helped provide school supplies for classrooms, non-perishable goods for food pantries, and outside home repairs for veterans. They both volunteer as counselors for the Medicaid Medicare Assistance Program at Senior Resources, and Jean is also a docent at the Ferenthall Theta. Meanwhile, Craig drives seniors to medical appointments and transports blood for the American Red Cross. The Wirichs have been dedicated in contributing to the community to help it continue to flourish. And Dr. Dick Camps and the woman he's dating, Lynn, and Ms. Carolyn Walker founded a new organization called Step Up to fill the need for helping Muskegon youth transitioning out of foster care and into adulthood. Dr. Camps helped purchase a house and has literally been on his hands and knees to help renovate the first house. All three have been positive mentors for the young women of the Step Up Home. They are currently underway to purchase and renovate a second home for young men. This innovative program not only provides housing for those aging out of the foster care system, but also promotes life skills, education, and preparation for gainful employment. Their selfless attitude, compassion, and humbleness have been recognized by many. Now, on behalf of the City of Muskegon and the Rotary Club, we recognize the generosity and persevering spirits of each of the recipients and congratulate them on being Muskegon's outstanding citizens for 2017, but along with that, congratulations, a heartfelt thank you that comes deep from, I think, each and every one of our souls for what you do to sustain the city, to sustain the soul of this city, and to make us a better home to live. Thank you very much.[548.45][548.45](applause). Now, I have a little token.
Well, I just wanted to express my thanks, but also our humble, our very humble thanks, because we realize there are so many people in this community who do so many things, and not the least of which are you here, the City Commission. And we just appreciate the efforts that you make to make this city a better place as well. We at Step Up certainly believe one of our missions, probably the most important mission, is investing in people, and that's what I see you doing as well. And with the opening sentence of the pastor who prayed tonight, he referred to the wise God, and we too pray for that wisdom for the people that we work with and that we see every day. We pray that for you as well, and we also pray for the love of all those people that we have contact with every day. So, thank you all.
(applause). To each and every one that is here this evening, I just would like to say thank you to Bill Craig and Laura Swanson for this opportunity to stand here and say thank you. And I also would like to thank Donna and the young lady that is here to represent with me. I thank you all very much for coming.[693.01][693.01](applause).
May we have the consent agenda, please.
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the May 7, 2018 work session and the May 8, 2018 regular meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Upgrade cable connections, City Clerk, summary request. To approve the purchase and installation of the necessary products to update the infrastructure for city TV services. Staff recommendation, approve the purchase and installation of the necessary products to update the infrastructure for city TV services. Summer Pops concession for City of Muskegon Parks, DPW, summary request. Staff is asking permission to enter into a seasonal contractual agreement for 2018 with Benjamin Thackery of Summer Pops Concession at Piermarquette Park located within the City of Muskegon to sell various items as stated in their proposal from a mobile concession. Staff recommendation, enter into a seasonal concession business contractual agreement for 2018 for Summer Pops Concession. Frank's Taco Shack for City of Muskegon Parks, DPW, summary request. Staff is asking permission to enter into a seasonal contractual agreement for 2018 with Frank Galindo of Frank's Taco Shack at Piermarquette Park and Lighton Park located within the City of Muskegon to sell various items as stated in their proposal from a mobile concession. Staff recommendation, enter into a seasonal concession business contractual agreement for 2018 with Frank Galindo of Frank's Taco Shack. Third Coast Rentals Concession for City of Muskegon Parks, DPW, summary request. Staff is asking permission to enter into a seasonal contractual agreement for 2018 with Ron Rans of Third Coast Rentals at Piermarquette Park located within the City of Muskegon to rent stand-up paddleboards, jet skis, pontoon, boats, and various beach items. Staff recommendation, enter into a seasonal concession business contractual agreement for 2018 with Ron Rans of Third Coast Rentals. Resolution authorizing the Pilot Drinking Water Community Water Supply Grant Agreement, DPW, summary request. The Department of Environmental Quality has approved a Pilot Drinking Water Community Water Supply Grant for the City of Muskegon and is requesting a resolution of support. The purpose of the grant is to update our distribution system material inventory and replace lead service lines. Staff is requesting that a resolution of support for the project be approved. Staff recommendation, approve resolution of support for the Pilot Drinking Water Community Water Supply Grant. Artificial Christmas Tree at Hackley Park, DPW, Parks Department, summary request. The Parks Department is requesting permission to purchase a 30-foot LED artificial panel tree with topper. The cost for the tree is $19,724. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase the 30-foot LED artificial panel tree to include topper and shipping costs. Bronner's Commercial Display is the sole source company. Toro Groundmaster mower, DPW, Parks Department, summary request. The Parks Department is requesting permission to purchase one Toro 3280 two WD groundmaster mower with recycler deck from Spartan Distributors, the lowest qualified bidder. The cost for the mower is $19,891.22. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase one Toro Groundmaster 3280 two WD motor with recycler deck from Spartan Distributors, the lowest qualified bidder. 2018 CDPG Home Budget Recommendations, CNS, summary request. To approve the 2018 budget recommendations from CDPG home allocations. Staff recommendation, to approve the 2018 CDPG and home budgets. Committee recommendation, the Citizens District Council has made their recommendations. Neighborhood renovations, City Manager, summary request. The city recently acquired properties at 1531 Beidler, 1078 Second Street, 1067 Grand Street, 248 Mason Street, and 1188 Fourth Street. All of the properties require extensive renovations prior to being made available for occupancy. Three of the properties were acquired via tax foreclosure and two via conventional property acquisition. Staff is seeking approval to invest up to $400,000 in these five structures. Once renovations are complete, the properties will be sold as affordable market rate residential properties. Staff recommendation, to authorize the City Manager to expend up to $400,000 for the renovation of city-owned structures at 1531 Beidler, 1078 Second Street, 1067 Grand, 248 Mason, and 1188 Fourth Street.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
I have the same question for items C and D, so we could handle it on just one. Say C.
Okay.
And J.
And J. Commissioner Warren?
Item G and item I.
Mr. Johnson?
No. If there are no others, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented minus items C, G, I, and J.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Rinsam-Savica to approve the consent agenda as presented minus items C, G, I, and J. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we enter into a seasonal concession business contractual agreement for 2018 with Benjamin Thackery of Summer Pops Concession.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, supported by Commissioner Johnson, enter into a seasonal concessions business contractual agreement for 2018 with Benjamin Thackery of Summer Pops Concession. Commissioner?
The first part of the question would be they've listed the hours that they're going to be open in the days, and their hours end at 7:00, when the things really just get going down at the beach. Is there some way to extend that a little bit, or are they flexible to do that? I know weather and things will enter into it, but, you know, we've got the sun until 9:00, 9:30 most of summer.
Well, I'm gonna let Doug speak to that, and maybe if the vendor themselves might be here. I don't think it would be a city requirement that they close on that time, so we'd probably love to see them open later if we could.
Good evening.
We just need your name and address for the clerk's record.
Yes, sir. It's Benjamin Thackery. My address is 3638 Whispering Woods Drive here in Muskegon, and we have no reason that we wouldn't stay open later, sir. We're exploding, really. It's been a great opportunity. We're stretched so thin right now. We're hiring people, and we would love to stay out there as long as the sun is, you know, up, so.
So, you'll make that judgment?
Yes, sir, absolutely, and I hope to be able to stay out there as long as there's people out there and as long as the sun is up and as long as we're selling them, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, and best of luck.
The other part of that question, we've changed our rental agreement with all our concessionaires down there from a straight 10% to $1,000 plus 5. Probably not an advantage. I hope it's not an advantage to the vendor. It's gonna be an advantage for the city.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the advantage is that now, we had a number of vendors. I think last year we had one in particular that we signed up that I don't even know if they came very many times at all. This will put some skin in the game up front, which will ensure that they're out there, because when we set up two or three vendors, you know, sometimes we like, we maybe would cordon off an area for a particular vendor. We wouldn't allow another vendor to go there, and then they don't show up, and maybe they don't show up for weeks and weeks at a time. This way, they'll have some skin in the game up front. They'll have an incentive to come more often to try to make up their initial investment, and then there's a bigger incentive after that, because we're only taking 5% instead of 10. So, it's, we're hoping it's a win-win with the focus on providing better vendor hours and better vendor reliability for the people that are out at the park.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this issue? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item I, Commissioner Warren?
I move to authorize staff to purchase a 30-foot LED artificial panel tree.
I meant item G, sorry.
Oh.
You're right, I was wrong.
To include topper and shipping costs, Bronner's Commercial Display is the sole source company.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Rinsam-Savica to authorize staff to purchase a 30-foot LED artificial panel tree to include topper and shipping costs. Bronner's Commercial Display is the sole source of the company. Commissioner?
So, I have a question, and I know there are a couple people in the audience, as the funds for this are coming from a few different sources, and so there has been concern about being inclusive when it comes to our holiday decorations in Hackley Park. And so, my question really is, has that been considered in conversation? I know some of this has been through fundraising and through the bid and through some of those assessments. Is there conversation about including holiday decorations to represent other religious holidays?
I'll make an attempt here, since I haven't been around super long time. From what I understand, that there have been conversations in the past, and I know that Bernadette has reached out to the synagogue in particular, and, you know, they're really quite happy with what happens at the park right now. They've not requested anything different to happen. She's always quite concerned about, for instance, where the nativity scene gets placed, so that it's, you know, near the church that helped with donations and not over where the synagogue is. But as far as I know, we have not had kickback from anybody or pushback. I don't know beyond the synagogue if there's been outreach to any other groups.
Do you have the same answer, Dave?
Dave Alexander, Downtown Muskegon now representing the bid, which is putting in 5,000 this year and 5,000 next year to help assist this along with the Women's Division of the Chamber and the city. I've been around those conversations. They have not resulted in anyone coming forward and wanting to put something specific up, but obviously, city policy would be, that would be available for any group that would want to put other decorations into the park, I would guess, correct?
Yeah, actually, I think not this last Christmas, but the Christmas before, we had a, like, an atheist group call and asked if they were gonna be able to. I think they were expecting us to tell them no, and I think I pretty much said, "Oh, Dr. Bernadette, man, I'm sure we can find space for you." And then they never, they never put it there, but I would say that we would accommodate as many people as we, as we can with the space that we have.
So, is it the responsibility of the group, as in this example, there's other fundraising and other ways to cover some of the costs of the decorations, it's the responsibility of the group to bring that to the city as far as proposing decorations?
We were requested to participate from the Business Improvement District, and they agreed to that as a help to the city, because it is very difficult to find the tree. It's very difficult to put the tree up and keep it up in the winds that we have in December in the parks, so we would be willing to take that to the other funding groups, or if there's another funding group that wants to come and participate.
Other areas, kind of like, we have brought up the nativity. The nativity was funded by the Women's, by the Women's Division, something that they wanted to have out there. So, I would say a lot of those decorations, the ones that are more, I don't, I don't wanna say are more generically just Christmas things like trains and Santa Claus and stuff like that, not necessarily focused, you know, on religion, aside from the idea that Christmas is a, is a Christian religion. Those are the ones that we provide, you know, that we spend time doing, you know, the little playhouses and, you know, and stuff like that. We haven't, to my knowledge, invested, you know, city dollars in things like nativity scenes or religious, you know, specific items, but we've been accommodating when people have wanted to display those in the park.
I believe there has been, I've been around 35 years. I've worked across the street from that park for a good portion of those. I believe in the past, there have been Jewish representations there. I'm not sure what has happened to that. I don't remember if Mayor remembers, but I think in the, in the day, there have been, and obviously Downtown would be very supportive of being inclusive.
Thank you.
And if I could point out, this was more of a logistical issue for us, as much as getting or not getting a real tree. The way, the place where the tree goes is in a, it's just, as that park's grown more popular, especially at the tree lighting and the different, different events that we have now there around Christmas time, it's become very difficult. Everything's kind of squished in front of that stage, and then where the tree goes is behind the, behind the nativity scene, and then we end up trying to squeeze, you know, 200 people into this 20-foot section in front of the stage, and then they look at the tree while the mayor does a countdown, but they can't actually see the tree because the nativity scene's in between them. And it just seems like it makes a lot of sense to grab this and move it to a more open area of the park, and we can shift the nativity scene back a little bit and then have more space up there. If anybody was there this last Christmas, I think there were students from Muskegon Catholic or something like that. They were there performing, and nobody could really see them, because really once the children's parents got in front of the stage, there was no room for any of the, you know, I mean, the miscellaneous spectators, there just wasn't enough room. That's what got us talking about this, was, okay, how do we make sure that people actually enjoy themselves here and, you know, and can be part of the festivities? And it all kind of centered around, we have to get that tree moved to a different location. And, and it seemed like this was a good alternative. If we were gonna move it, let's, let's find a long-term artificial route.
And each year's been a countdown scramble to find a donated live tree.
Well, a lot of folks have been donating, you know, calling us well in advance, but it was more like finding the time to get in there and cut it down and move it and have a DPW there to do it, whether decorating the park. This way, this'll just be one more decoration that they just, they put up, and it's more manageable than trucking a big, heavy tree in. And I think about this tree, is it's, it's scalable, so if we decide, hey, you know, this is too tall, we can take off the bottom four feet. If we decide it's not tall enough in five years, if DMN or somebody wants to invest more money, they can buy four more feet for the bottom of it, and it can continue to grow as the community grows.
Any other questions?
This is also pre-lit tree, isn't it?
Yep.
Anything else? Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would just like to reinforce Commissioner Warren's sentiment on the need for us just to be an inclusive city. That's really important to me. We're a multicultural society, including the City of Muskegon. There's a lot of different faith and cultures that exist in the city, and so I'm sensitive about the city being perceived as sponsoring a particular religion, and so I'd rather refer to this as a holiday tree than a Christmas tree, given that it does give off the air that we are sponsoring a particular religion in that sense, and this is a public park. And so, I'm relieved to hear that staff has been receptive to other overtures to accommodate other cultures and religions there, whether it be Hanukkah, whether it be Kwanzaa, Eid of Fitra for Ramadan, happens around holidays, the Christmas time occasionally, rotates throughout the year. Every year's a different time, but there's some overlap. So, I just think it's really important that we continue to be inclusive and accommodating of as many cultures and holidays as possible and not be perceived as sponsoring any one. You know, I, I happen to celebrate Christmas, as I believe most people do here, but I don't think it's the, you know, the role of this government or any government, given the separation of church and state, church and state, to sponsor a particular religion. So, I am pleased with the bid, and the Women's Division has donated money, so our outlay into this will only be less than $5,000. So, I will be supporting this, but I just wanna reinforce that, that sentiment on us being an inclusive community.
And I think in the past, you know, even from telephone calls through the past 17 years, we've made that very clear to people. There have been inquiries, but people haven't followed through. But we never got dinged on, you know, any indication that we were, you know, playing favorites, because, you know, the history of donated and what we have always provided was the secular element. was the secular element, but everyone I, that I've talked through, through the years, you know, they, they realize that they're, they're welcome, they just never carry through with, you know, what they potentially thought that they would. You know, they presented schematics and signs for peace and whatnot, and I said, you know, when you're ready, come on back. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssensipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item I, Commissioner Warren.
I move to approve the 2018 CDBG and home budgets.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to approve the 2018 CDBG and home budgets. Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Hi.
I was hoping you could explain some of the line items on this budget, and also the discrepancies, because it appears that the staff recommended budget is different than the committee recommended budget. So if you could just kind of give an overview of that, please.
Sure, not a problem. Well, the, each year, we are tasked to come up with a budget for CDBG and home, and so each year, the staff has its recommendations, and then we take those to our Citizens District Council, and then they provide what their recommendations would be based on the staff. This year, we have added a couple of line items. One of them was the senior pilot program. We were going to position ourselves to ask for money from the senior millage to do some countywide programs. And we thought we would start with a pilot program through the city, through our priority home repair. What happened after the fact is that it is a, as a standalone program, it would be separated from our priority home repair and be a public service, because we're identifying a specific group of people. And so we kind of overshot that and felt that we should pull that off and go for just continuing to track how many seniors we assist, and then what services we provide to those seniors. Then, the neighborhood beautification is a third line item that was added that hasn't been on before, and that is based on what discussions the city has been having with planning and engineering about the Third Street corridor, and really making a difference in how that looks, expanding some sidewalks and doing some infrastructure, and so which a CDBG in that particular census tract could be used. And so we received more money than what we anticipated. And each year, HUD gives us a list of communities and what we're receiving as far as home and CDBG and ESG and other HUD allocations. This year, when the staff initially met, that we didn't know what it was, we were told, and as in previous years, we just have to go on what we received the year before. And so that's what we did, and the very same day that we were meeting with the Citizens District Council is when those numbers came, and so I was very excited to bring the real numbers to the Citizens District Council, but the staff had not seen those real numbers. And so that's the difference that you'll see. And so when the Citizens District Council met a second time to kind of go over, because we were running out of time, and usually our meetings are about an hour, but we met specifically about the budget after that, and then the staff met after the Citizens District Council met, and so here you have two sets of, which is normal, what, that's what we do, we bring what the staff would like to see happen, and we bring what the recommendations are of the Citizens District Council. And most years, the Citizens District Council is very accommodating to what the staff, and they'll ask in the meeting, well, is this really necessary? And, you know, so there's discussion at the Citizens District Council meeting as well about what these line items are, and I don't know what else to say, but that's what it is. The staff has their budget, and then the Citizens District Council, based on what they've been given and what they feel is appropriate, then they have their recommendations as well.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So the senior, finding out more information about the senior millage funds, that wasn't until after the CDC met to allocate these funds?
Correct. When we were, because anything that changes has to be changed in our action plan, and because we can't turn in an action plan without having a budget, the intent on having a budget is to say, are we going to do something new? Then let me add that to our action plan before we submit it. The other item is the neighborhood beautification. Anything we add, we want to tell HUD, here's our new program, it fits with that. And so as I was looking at our allocations, HUD has a lot of different percentages that you have to meet at the end of a, of a funding year, and one of them is that you can't go over or fund projects more than 15% for public service. And so if we had had a separate senior program, that would have made us go over our public service by quite a bit. And so that would have something that we certainly could not afford to do, because we don't want to have to pay back money for going over any of our percentages.
Okay.
And so we were left with an extra $40,000, once all of the other projects that are normally funded with the additional funds that we received this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Anita or observations? Commissioner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So yeah, it's just a bit unusual this year that, because the CDC had an extra special meeting, so that the CDC, and just to remind everyone, I'm the liaison on the Citizens District Council, the commission liaison, so that the public knows, because I go to these meetings regularly, we had a special meeting in May so that the CDC could review the staff-proposed budget before it came to the commission, and it's just unusual this year that staff then met two days later and changed its proposed budget. So what I'd shared with everyone is what, the compiled three budgets, the budget that staff proposed to CDC, the budget the staff has presented here tonight, and then the CDC recommended. What's in the packet only shows what's presented tonight and the CDC. So I wanted to give you context as to what was presented to the CDC, so you can understand why the CDC allocated what it did. For instance, the CDC, staff proposed to the CDC $100,000 going to the senior pilot program, that was reduced to $90,000 by CDC, whereas in the packet, it looks like staff recommended nothing for senior pilot, and then the CDC just created this out of the blue. The CDC was not necessarily gung-ho about the, the senior pilot program, that was a staff-driven program. The sense I got with that is that they would have preferred some of that money going elsewhere, particularly to youth opportunities and summer internships. The CDC did restore the $50,000 for dangerous buildings and $10,000 for boardups, and the $50,000 for the demolition, which was originally the staff's intent to have that there. So that was restored. CDC was not aware about the neighborhood beautification for Third Street's sidewalks. My sense is they probably wouldn't be too upset with that, adding that. Then the question remains, though, what do you do with the other $50,000? And the staff proposed, one as presented tonight, $25,000 was returned to the services, or to priority home repair, $25,000 was returned to code enforcement. The CDC initially was inclined to get rid of the code enforcement altogether, believing that should be funded from our general fund, not from community development block grant monies. But then decided just to cut it in half right now, at $25,000, and revisit it next year as to whether it's appropriate to be funding code enforcement from community development block grant monies. So with regard to priority home repair, I am confident that the CDC would not want that $25,000 added back to it, and leaving it $125,000, particularly because there's $265,000 remaining from previous allocations. So it's not underfunded in the least, even with our expansions in terms of who qualifies for the priority home repairs. And so I can say with confidence, CDC would not want that $25,000 returned to the priority home repair, and to leave it at $125,000 allocation for this upcoming fiscal year, in which case, what do we do with the $25,000 in that regard? And I believe that the CDC would like to see it go towards youth opportunities and summer internships. There was much discussion in that regard, consideration of whether to allocate that or work with Michigan Works on youth employment, or the YEP program through Community and Compass. And so I would advocate allocating monies towards that. Let staff consider youth employment opportunities in conference with the CDC to determine where that money should be going, who should be getting that money in terms of youth employment opportunities. And I think they'd even be happy with putting $50,000 there, rather than restoring $25,000 for code enforcement. A good chunk of that code enforcement is going towards our vacant building program. As my fellow commissioners may recall, our vacant building program does generate revenue in and of itself. In previous years, it's generated about $150,000 a year. It's a, by and large, a self-sustaining program that does not necessarily need money coming from community development block grants to support. That's money, the consensus I got from the CDC is that they'd like to see more of this CDPG money going towards actual community development, and, and supporting of our neighborhoods and our, and our youth. And so I would even be inclined to allocating $50,000 for youth opportunities and summer internships, because that's something that was near and dear to the hearts of many of the members on our CDC. And I, I know we've got one member of our CDC here, maybe there's others, I don't know if Mr. Mayor would like to hear from our CDC representative or not on this. But there's one other thing with regard to home funds, is that what is being proposed by staff tonight is to cut that from $100,000 to $50,000, and one of the impetus was that, is that there's currently only one CHODO that is available to access this money, as we're told. I've spoken with that CHODO, and they have the capability to use that $100,000, they have a project right now, that they can use that $100,000 and leverage it with additional monies, so that they can move forward with their rehabs and, and providing low-income housing. And so we also have representatives of that CHODO here, so if Mr. Mayor would be welcoming, we could hear from them as well as to how they would use that money as a CHODO.
You wanted to?
Just two really quick things, and also Anita has a, has a, just a better interjection here. Just, just to point out, the senior pilot program, that $100,000, I do believe, were priority home repairs specifically for seniors, is that, is that correct, Anita? Or am I, am I reading that wrong? The senior, senior pilot program, that was, that was removed out of here from the $90,000 that was distributed throughout here, the senior pilot program, they were priority home repair funds, but specifically for seniors and...
Correct. It was, it was going to separate funding for just seniors. That's what the senior pilot program was.
I just want to point that out.
But it was more expansive than the priority home repairs, because there were a lot of restrictions. So the idea with the senior pilot program as presented to staff, and Ms. Bailey can elaborate this, on this, but as communicated to the CDC, was that money was going to go towards more than just priority home repairs, so they could get to, because priority home repairs deal with roofing and heating, cooling, that kind of things, whereas this other program would have gone towards foundational issues and other aspects of the house, just to, to improve it.
There was that, and then on, on the CHODO allocation, if I remember right, and we'll let Cooney and Compass once respond to this, if I do recall, I think there was maybe some, I don't want to say disagreement, but the way the funds would be reimbursed to the city, I'm not sure that they've been, you know, I don't want to say, is this, is this a different issue? Okay, forget about it. I'm just taking my cues from Kimmy over there.
Okay. But on, on the, could you go in more detail on the CHODO aspect?
Absolutely. So the CHODO allocations, there's a minimum that we have to give to our CHODOs, and that's 15%, so it's a little under $49,000, right around there. And so the, the staff proposed the 50, in the last two to three years, we've given only the minimum, so that the city could have what we need to do our projects, which are rehab or new construction. And so the $100,000 that was proposed by the CDC was based on our proposal to help fund the CHODOs at the 100%, 100,000, because that was a question from one of the CHODOs to have it. But then, after I went to staff, after our staff, our local staff and CNS, we talked about the, the lack of two CHODOs being in competition for the funds, and because of the requirements that HUD has for us to spend the CHODO money, once it's been allocated, you can't really take it out of CHODO reserve, and so then that locks us into other stipulations to have that spent in a certain amount of time. And so what we have now is a situation where we didn't want to be locked into making, having to give $100,000 of that money set aside for CHODOs, when you can't apply for future funds until you've spent the funds that you've already been allocated. And so that was another situation where we don't want to be tied to holding on to a lot of money if there's already a project designated from the previous years. And when you look at what we have, typically getting $180,000 to do renovations on a home, by the time you purchase the home and you do renovations, you've probably spent about $125,000, especially since the competition for purchasing any home that needs rehabilitation is going to be upwards of $20,000 or so. So that would be a reason for us being able to use that money and get it spent within the timeframe that we need to, and $239,000, you can do a couple of homes and have some leeway for purchasing those homes. And we usually do that through our, our HUD, through the emails, or through the, the website through HUD, purchasing direct from HUD.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this issue? Commissioner Warren?
So because at that lower $50,000 amount, you're locked in to that $50,000, however, could you use money from a different fund to transfer in to a CHODO account, or is it just...
Sure. You can always give more if you have more, and so through program income and changing that to CHODO allocation, if there's any available, if there's any additional entitlement money that isn't spent, but, or if we didn't get used to homes, but that is always a possibility.
Sure.
If there's money left, we try to make it work.
Okay. Thank you.
When does this budget need to be adopted by?
Well, what, what I'm asking for tonight is, I needed to know which budget to put into the paper. Every time we have an allocation, we have a public comment, and so placing the budget in the paper is a 15-day public comment period, and so anyone from the audience tonight, or anyone watching from Facebook, or later in the process of time, you can make comments about the budget that is proposed to be adopted. So if you're not adopting it tonight, then that's something that we, but I have to put something in the paper, I have to know what area we're going in. And it would be nice to know that we have a budget, but we can certainly put it in the paper as a proposed budget, but I can't put both budgets in the paper.
Commissioner?
So in the past, after public comment, does it get approved at a more formal level, or does it get approved first and then public comment, and then it's just approved?
Well, we've done it both ways. We've had it out for public comment, and then we have approved it once those comments are done, and we submit the action plan with the budget. Each year, unfortunately, it's been, especially the last five years, it has been different. One year could be that the comments would go in, or that there are no comments, typically there are not, but it appears that there'll be some comments this time, so that'll be different and, and nice. But what, what happens is, the, the comments are to come as a result of letting the public know. This is what we want to do with CDPG and home. And so if there are comments, then those things will go to HUD, HUD will look at those things, and we would look at those as a staff and see, is there anything that we want to do to make changes to our budget, our proposed budget? And if we make any changes at that point, that would be up to us to do that, but for the most part, it is just a, here's our budget, this is what we plan to do. Do you have any comments about that? And then we submit those to HUD, as we do with the action plan as well.
Commissioner?
I mean, I would like to explore the idea of amending my motion to submitting the budget for a public comment and then we can see what comes in and then we can approve a budget once we can see the public comments rather than vice versa.
And just to be clear, for public comment purposes, do you want to send out the staff proposed or the CDC proposed?
Yeah, I think the, I mean, I, I think the, the staff proposed is fine, knowing that it's going to come back before us with the public comments. I mean, either, either one is fine. I think that's fine to do the staff proposed.
Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I, I think we could hammer out the budget right now and have that go be published and then look at amending it further if, if need be. But I did want to get clarification from, from staff because what's in our agenda is just to approve the 2018 CDBG and home budgets, which, you know, we have two different budgets and typically we have these committees formed from our citizens that make recommendations to us. And then we either concur or deny or amend what the committee recommends. And so what I'm, want to understand right now is the motion was to approve which budget? The CDC recommended budget, as is typically the case, or the staff recommended budget?
Well, typically in past years, it's the staff recommended budget. And having sat in your place in all those years on the CDC, that's typically where we, you know, end up with the explanation why, you know, staff is recommending. We have made some amendments in the past, but distant past, back in the days of our social service-type agency allocations, which, you know, disappeared, you know, decades ago. But as is typical, we, you know, it was the staff budget would, you know, come with the explanation and that, that's what we've been approving all these years, even as you, you know, sit here.
They're always the same.
It's always the same.
Usually always the same.
Right.
The staff and the, the CDC.
So, and again, it's, it's, it's not a slap at, you know, our fellow citizens because they're essential. They are required, you know, by our enabling to, you know, be the eyes and the questioning. And if we can't do it on our own, it's not allowed. But we can amend, you know, with, you give your rationale and the like. Staff is, you know, you know, given theirs. And it's pretty par for the course, you know, you know, what, what the staff has recommended and why and where they're taking it, as has been in the past. But again, it shouldn't be seen as a slap at the advisory committee because just sometimes things come in, different funds, different amounts, last minute, and, you know, needs change. So, no, I'm, I'm just saying, sometimes it's fluid. Past years hasn't been too fluid. There, there hasn't been a lot there, you know, to deal with, so.
I don't know. I, I guess I'm of the mind that we're kind of far away from agreeing to what the amount should be and so I don't, it sounds like we're putting this out for public comment. I'm wondering if we should just pick one of these and set a, a date to receive the public comments by and then adopt it at that point. I don't know if we're going to get to the point where we're ready to adopt the budget as it's, you know, to approve the budget and say we're going to stick with that one, you know? I, I don't know. So I, I don't know if that wording is, it would be good to have an emotion. And if we're, if we have a process to receive public comments and have the opportunity to amend it, why don't we just, you know, amend the motion and recommend that, I don't know, you know, which one frankly, if it makes too much difference, I think everyone who's interested in this will be able to look at the three columns and, you know, figure it out, but maybe just go with the staff proposed budget for a lack of a better one to, to go with and publish that and then, and then, so just, and that would be the motion tonight. But I don't know what staff would say about that, but.
When would that come? Then it would still have to come back to us because we have to actually accept the budget.
Right. You're going to have to actually approve our budget as you would with all of the budgets for the city of Muskegon.
Right. And so, and that would occur after the 15-day comment period. So it'd come back to us yet this month then.
Not this month because you don't have a meeting. So it would be?
Yeah, right. This is the end of May.
The 12th, I believe.
Frank?
And if I could too, if the, if the, if the end goal hopefully here is that the CDC and staff recommended budgets are, you know, essentially one and the same, maybe in the meantime, while this comment period's going on, we schedule a, you know, a follow-up, you know, a third CDC meeting and, you know, and try to come to consensus so that we're all, so that we're all in agreement on what the expenses or what the expenditure should be or the allocation should be.
Well, there is a CDC meeting at the beginning of June.
Yeah, we can do that and then that'll be before the next city commission meeting. It seems reasonable.
Commissioner Johnson?
I guess I just want clarification on what the public comment process is because what would have been communicated to the CDC at the first meeting in May was that this has to get done, it's under timeline. That's why the CDC decided to hold a special meeting in, in May so that they could give its input and not have a repeat of last year where a budget came to the commission, the commission approved the budget and then the CDC got to review it. And I mean, there was disgruntlement and disappointment that why, why do we have citizens serving on this committee that reviews how to allocate these funds, make recommendations, and essentially they were being ignored? And that's what is going to be the perception again now, you know, going forward with a staff recommended budget that differs from the CDC and having a staff recommended budget changed after the CDC reviews it, reviewed it. I, I take you to heart, Mr. Mayor, that you, you believe these, these bodies, that we point people that are essential, but to give them credence, we have to be respectful of, of their recommendations. So I would not be in favor of moving forward with putting the staff proposed budget that's being presented today out to be published. I'd rather have the CDC recommended one be published and we can make changes subsequently if need be. But I would like to understand what the public comment aspect of is, it is just you're going to publish it and whomever emails you or writes your calls you, that's going to be your public comment? There's no public hearings, none of that? I mean, because you've already had the public hearings for the, the action plan.
For the action plan.
So for the CDC budget and allocations of CDBG and home funds, it's just publishing in the paper and whomever reaches out to you, reaches out to you.
That is correct. So when the budget is presented and there are comments or questions about the budget, then I answer the questions that are presented to me by the citizens who ask questions. Likewise, if they put it in writing to me, then I can write back to them and tell them what questions they have, give them the answers that they have. Then those things are all submitted to HUD for them to see that there were comments about the budget as there would be with any comment period. There's an opportunity to ask questions, to share what you feel is your thoughts about the budget. So it is truly the period of time that the public has to ask questions and present their information about what they see. Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Would it be appropriate, because there is a CDC meeting during this public comment period, would it be appropriate to invite people of the public to attend that meeting if they want to have more of an open public hearing style where the members of the CDC and staff could be present if they wanted to do those comments in person?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the citizens district council meeting is a public meeting. Anyone can come.
Sure.
And we have had in the past, so.
Sure, sure.
Commissioner?
I think that's a great idea in terms of promoting that meeting because that falls on the 15th date from now. Presumably you're going to publish it tomorrow or the next day.
No, we would publish on a Sunday. Typically, we like to publish on Sundays. There are the larger paper, people read more on that. Or they take the Sunday paper more so than any other.
Okay. And then can, as part of publishing the budget, can you indicate that there's a citizens district council meeting on June 5th and give the, the time and the place?
Well, there's a, there's a format for the budget. Once it's placed in the paper, there are certain things that we have to say because even after the 15-day comment period to the city of Muskegon, there's also a 15-day comment period that you can send your comments or questions directly to HUD, who will have our budget at that time. So there's a, it's a 30-day complete comment period. The first 15 are to the city and the former or the latter 15 would go directly to HUD. And there is information in that publication about who you would present your information to.
Commissioner?
Well, I think we need to do something tonight with this. I mean, we want, we need to give some indication of what we want. We need to start the public comment period. So that's how I understand it. I'm not sure which one we should publish, but I, I guess I would, I'm not sure what legal counsel would say was, is if we should withdraw the motion and start from scratch or?
Frankly, at this point, don't remember what exactly the motion was.
It's exactly what's in the rec, staff recommendation.
Which doesn't clarify which of the two.
No.
It ought to be clarified.
Yeah. So I don't know who made the motion.
I made the motion. So is it better to withdraw or amend?
I don't have a preference.
I will withdraw my motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. All right.
Do we need to vote on that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to, what should I say? Approve and publish. I move to approve and publish the 2018 CDBG and home budgets as recommended by the citizens district council.
Support?
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Rensselaas, saving to, how'd you say that again? To publish and?
To approve and publish.
To approve and publish the 2013 CDBG and home budgets as presented by the CDC.
Say, say the motion one more time.
I move to approve and publish the 2018 CDBG and home budgets as recommended by the citizens district council.
I seconded that?
Yes, you seconded that.
You did. And this will all fit into the 15-day comment period to go back to a meeting with CDC staffers to give clarification, ask to the recommendations and any other questions.
So does the approval of the budget mean that we're approving it, but it could be amended again based on the public comment?
Correct.
It doesn't formally get adopted until we adopt the fiscal 2019 overall budget? Is that, that's the impression I got from Ms. Bailey.
Yeah.
All right. So if you are proposing to approve and adopt, approve and publish the citizens district council budget, then what it will read in the paper is this, this is the proposed budget. Either budget would be the proposed budget. Not the approved, but it would be the proposed.
Okay.
Does that, is that the question answered for you?
I don't know. I, I guess I've been through the CDC process quite a number of times too. I used to be on it, not as a commission representative. I think when the mayor was the commission representative, I was a citizen. I mean, I think that the staff, you know, proposal in, you know, has been what's been presented to the commission always in the past. And whether, you know, there have been discrepancies in the past, and I remember when I sat on it, you know, between what the CDC recommended. I don't, I don't think, I mean, I don't know if I'd vote against this motion, but I, I, I don't know. I just think we should usually, you know, present to the commission what the staff recommends and with the other input. But I think that there's adequate time to take in the public comment and look at these things and, and, you know, it's a proposed budget, so we could, you know, there's room for change. So I could support this at this point.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, in my mind, the CDC recommended budget is satisfactory to me and the only question is what to do with that $90,000 that had been originally allocated to the senior pilot program, which has been nixed, and what do we do with that $90,000? In my mind, that's the only question that remains on this. Everything else in the CDC recommended budget is completely satisfactory to me. And so ultimately, we're going to have to make a decision about that $90,000. If not tonight, another day.
And be prepared that there may be others on the body that are satisfied in the other direction.
Oh, that's perfectly fine, but I'm going to, I'm going to advocate for my citizens district council. It is a body made up of citizens across the city, every single ward, people from all walks of life, very wide demographic. I'm very proud of the CDC and its makeup right now. I'm proud of its input and that CDC has felt like it's basically been treated as just a rubber stamper in the past and we've had people leave the CDC because of that sentiment. And so I will advocate for the citizens district council and what their recommendations are.
And I have in the past gone to them directly to assure them, they aren't a rubber stamp, but sometimes this is how things work out. Sometimes we know better, sometimes others know more and there are rationales why, so.
Commissioner Warren?
I will be supporting this motion, although I would have appreciated the opportunity to make a motion as I was the person that pulled this off of the agenda and made the motion initially. But my fellow commissioner will not be slow to raise his hand faster than me. So I will be supporting this, this motion and I look forward to the further dialogue between staff and the CDC.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Callen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item J, Commissioner Turnquist.
I would make a motion to authorize the city manager to expend up to $400,000 for the renovation of city-owned structures on Beidler, Second, Grand, Mason Street and Fourth Street.
Support?
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Rensselaas, to authorize the city manager to expend up to $400,000 for the renovation of city-owned structures at 1531 Beidler, 1078 Second Street, 1067 Grand Street, 248 Mason Street and 1188 Fourth Street.
Discussion? Question?
The city manager and I have talked a number of times on, on these programs and, and up until this time and maybe this time also, I don't think that it's our place to be in the real estate business. However, I've had some discussions with some other people and, and if you can further expand on this, Frank, and maybe what's happened in neighborhoods that you have done this. We're trying to increase the evaluation of the properties in the surrounding areas. And I guess that the, the best example is Midtown Square where we built nine houses and value of property in there, I think you have told me, has increased. I think we also talked one time about private investor, investors looking at this and maybe getting some properties and renovate them and, and sell them on that, which I much prefer. When we're in the real estate business, we had some extra privileges provided to us that a regular real estate broker would not have. That's where I feel and that's my question, but maybe if you can substantiate? But maybe if you can substantiate how it's worked, where homes have been renovated.
Yeah, so, so you brought up the Midtown Square, and I don't have the, you know, the report that was sent out to commissioners in front of me. But, you know, what we've seen since Midtown Square in particular, and we know that that's not the only contributing factor. Obviously, we know the market in general is up. We know that our blight fight activities have happened in that area. We know that other community agencies have been making investments in that area as well. But we had Coldwell Banker kind of do a, a market analysis for us that kind of looked at 30 months leading up to the day the nine houses officially were completed and available for occupancy, and then the 21 months since then. So up through August of 2016 was one section, then August 16th through today was another section. And, and what we saw, and again, we're not, and we're not saying that the Midtown Square was 100% the, you know, the resulting, you know, factor here. But what we've seen were significant increase in overall amount of real estate transactions. We've seen a significant increase in the, in the value of those individual transactions. I want to say, when we looked at the McLaughlin and Nelson neighborhoods as a whole, you know, the, the sale prices were up quite a few percent. It's okay, I can go off the top of my head. You know, they were up, you know, hundreds of percent, not just, not just a few percent, but hundreds of percent. And then we looked at the price per square foot. Again, they were up hundreds of percent. But when you, when you took that information, so when we, so that area, we pretty much took Seaway Drive, you know, kind of like Muskegon and Webster on the one side, Seaway Drive on the other, the edge of, of the McLaughlin neighborhood on the other, and then Laketon Avenue to the south. And, and that was what we used for kind of like the larger scale. What kind of impact have we kind of had on the, on the area? And then we sucked it down to more like that, kind of like three blocks in either direction of Midtown Square. We looked at that again, and we, and we compared that data to the two neighborhoods as a whole. And what we saw were significant, significantly different numbers. We saw that, that the growth was, was, in all areas, was, was even more, you know, three, 400% improvements in, you know, in the average sale price, you know, almost 500% improvement in the, in the price per square foot. The amount of real estate exponentially was higher than, you know, the, the, the amount of value. I guess the number of, of real estate transactions was quite a bit higher. And again, we don't attribute it all to Midtown Square, but we think that Midtown Square was a catalyst in those, in that, in those two neighborhoods, in Nelson in particular, and in that, kind of like what we call the, the nine-block Nelson blight fight area in particular, where we, where we've invested significant city resources and, you know, and cleaning up the park, significant city resources and building the houses. And then we've seen community encompass make significant investments, and a number of folks make significant investments. But what we think we've seen is a, is a, is a very marked improvement in valuations in that area. And the closer you get to that Midtown Square, it seems like the, the increase seems to be much more apparent. So while we're not saying that it was 100% the culprit, we are, we are thinking that, that it was a key contributing factor to the, to the growth. And so, you know, in, I guess in the same vein there, we've acquired a couple houses, two of them, you know, via purchase, but the rest of these were just tax foreclosures. They, instead of going to land bank, we kind of grabbed them from the, you know, from the, from the county treasurer with the goal of saying, okay, we've seen what the impact was of, of a high-quality real, new construction, you know, real estate venture. Let's see what impact we can have in this, in these two neighborhoods, essentially with some high-quality rehab that's available for market rate buyers. And so there's one on Second Street, one on Bedler, which just happens to be in Nims, just across Seaway Drive. I think there's one on Fifth that we took that we're gonna, it's not on your list, because we're going to make that available to Anita's team to develop as a, as a low moderate income opportunity. But when you see this here, we, we fully expect that we're going to make a $400,000 investment, plus whatever acquisition costs for between the five properties. But we think we're going to be able to recoup every, every penny of that there, and then see the investment in the neighborhood exponentially. So when you say, what are the benefits that we receive versus a private entity? One thing about Midtown Square for us that made, made sense for us was, we can recoup our money over long, long term, right? When a developer is looking at building houses, they pretty much have one time to recoup their money is when they sell it. But we're in a little bit of a more of a unique situation where, when we create wealth and create investment in our community, we collect for years on property taxes, potentially years on income taxes, and we get to see growth in properties adjacent to it, which, which ultimately to us result in new, in new revenues to offset that investment. So whereas, excuse me, in Midtown Square, we can look at and see, from a sheer profit-loss standpoint, it costs us more money to build those than we took in on the sale. We can also look long-term and say, yeah, but over a course of just a few years, the impact on the neighborhood in terms of revenue back to us is, is, you know, is significant enough to, to more than recover those, you know, those profit and loss on the initial sales. And so that's why we're looking at these is, is let's create a market, instead of making the private sector create a market, because they can only do it at the, at the sale point. We can create our market over the long term.
That's the hard part for me to, you know, they're not real numbers yet, but in the future, it should cause more income or give the city more income. I guess I look too much at, we, we spend the money, and initially, we've lost money. And Midtown Square, that's a Nelson neighborhood, I believe, and these addresses, are they in Bedler, as you said, is the Nims neighborhood? The other four are where?
The other are, I believe they're all in Nelson.
Except Grant. That's in Nims.
Yeah, Grant. I'm sorry. There's two, there are two in Nims, and then the rest are in Nelson. I'm sorry. And then a number, a number just popped in my head, and I think that these are reasonably accurate. In that, when we look specifically at that Midtown Square area, the average home sale price was like $15,000 in that, in the time leading up to Midtown Square. And then in the 21 months since then, it's like in the high 70s, like $77,000 or $78,000, if you go back to the report that we gave you. We are, the staff is going to spend some time, me in particular, I'm going to spend some time and make that report a little more user-friendly, and then we'll make it available for the public just to kind of see what we think the, the return on the, the investment is. But that was really just designed to give you guys commissioners an initial, an initial report.
The $400,000 is used to acquire these properties, or we already have the properties?
We already have them. Yep.
So the $400,000 is renovation?
Correct. Yep.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand Commissioner Turnquist's concerns. I think at, at this point, you know, the city can still invest. Their properties are coming to us relatively inexpensively. That may not always be the case. I think at this point, we can still, you know, invest an amount of money, like $400,000 in the properties that we acquire cheaply, and we can see that the tax revenue, you know, helps us to make that a good return on investment for the City of Muskegon. That may not be the case when the acquisition prices get too high. And I think that that's the point we're trying to get to with the private market, is that they will be able to, you know, because they'll be able to make a quicker profit when, when the acquisition prices are higher in surrounding property. So I'd, I'd support this motion, and, you know, I think we should, in a calculated way, keep making investments in, in rehabbing homes in the City of Muskegon, so that we can get that market even stronger.
One last comment, not to belabor this, but one thing that's been key to us, we're, we're trying to purchase properties that were already vacant. I know one of these in particular is, is not vacant now, but the goal was not to displace people out of the homes, more to take vacant structures and make them livable parts of the community again. And so the goal is even as, if people end up being displaced out of the, out of the house on Fourth Street, that what's, what's added back into the community are affordable owner-occupied opportunities for the people that, whether there's space out of this, or other people, so that the neighborhood, you know, continues to be affordable, but also sustainable for the community.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I find that our home infill program at Midtown Square was a success in the end. We sold all nine. We recouped approximately 90% of the, the home construction cost, which is right in line with what I was hoping would be the minimum, because we knew going into this project that it was, we weren't going to be, we're not, we were not doing it for profit. We were not trying to turn a profit. We were doing it to build up neighborhoods, stabilize neighborhoods, build up new homes, new affordable, oh, maybe not so affordable those houses, depending on your income, but new housing to attract new people into our community and help stabilize neighborhoods. And so I see what the city manager has presented here with these renovations as a kind of a continuation or complimentary aspect of it for continued neighborhood stabilization. Otherwise, some of these houses may have ultimately seen fall into such disrepair that they would have been demoed, and we would have vacant properties. So one question I do want to answer or get answered is, we saw about $1.3 million returned to us from the net, returned to us from the sale of Midtown Square?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, if that's what's on the, on the report. I don't have it in front of me, but...
That was a number I sent to you to get confirmed, and how much actually was returned to our Public Improvement Fund. Because the expectation when we originally funded Midtown Square was, we were going to build these houses, the proceeds from it were going to be recycled back into more home infill. And so I'm comfortable with using those proceeds for these home renovations, which I see as a complimentary program.
Everything went back into Public Improvement Fund?
It was about $1.3 million that was returned to a Public Improvement Fund. So we're going to take this $400,000 now from our Public Improvement Fund to go into this.
And we'll recycle that back in there when the homes are, when the homes are sold.
And we'll continue, the expectation is we'll continue recycling that money for, for home infill renovations and just neighborhood, all-around neighborhood stabilization.
And some people have questioned, I know we talked about moving on to Phase Two and getting some new infills built down the street, and that's still a goal of ours. We do have a builder that we've been working with that we're kind of baby-stepping along, that we think is willing to step up and, and, and maybe with a little support from the city, undertake the investment himself, but with us kind of backstopping it, so that they don't end up losing, you know, a lot on a, on a still unproven market. But get us out of the business of building them from the ground up, but more bringing us on as a partner. And so rather than jump into building those, you know, taking that full risk on ourselves, you know, this spring, you know, we've been kind of, like I said, baby-stepping this individual along. And, and we think he's still very interested in it. I'm going to have lunch, breakfast with him tomorrow morning, and, you know, try to get that firm commitment. And if we get that firm commitment, then we'll probably see, you know, some, some action coming to, to this group in the next, you know, couple of months, to see if we can have private sector building, and then us acting as backstop, as kind of like that next step closer to just private sector building and financing.
Okay. And I would just say I appreciate the, the data that the staff provided to give context to success of Midtown Square, looking at the sales in the months before and the month after, and getting the project going. And, I mean, even, even with the rebounding housing market, I don't think, that does not alone, a rebounding house marketing, housing market, account for 750% increase in sales for that neighborhood, and a tripling in the price per square foot. So I, I think that the efforts of Midtown Square, as well as other city efforts, have contributed to, contributed to that, so.
And the ceiling's still high. At $75,000, just still room for more continued growth over the next few years.
I do like, final note, I do like we're doing the renovations for more affordable housing in our neighborhoods, and not just, you know, what we're looking at.
It'll be much cheaper to do these and build new ones in their places. I promise you.
Okay.
Commissioner Warren?
I agree with that from a price point. And can you remind us what to expect? I know as we go through the different phases, as far as other neighborhoods that are on the docket. So we've got Nelson, and now we're talking about some home infill in Nims. Are there...
The three neighborhoods that were in the original plan were Nelson, I think Jackson Hill, and Nims. And we hadn't decided on which one we were going to move on to yet for the infill. But the two homes in Nims that, they presented themselves to us when they went to tax foreclosure, and it didn't make, they were just, they were great houses. If you know the one on Grand, it's essentially right next to that front porch church. It's right up against the parking lot. It's a really cool, nice house, had great woodwork. It just made sense that somebody tried to save that particular one. It needs new foundation, which is why it's, you know, a little bit more expensive than the others to rebuild. But we think the neighborhood that it's in, it doesn't need a whole lot of infill housing to give it value. There's already a lot of value, a lot of nice houses on the block. It just was a lot for a private sector buyer to go in and buy and consider replacing three of the basement walls in a, you know, in a otherwise almost 100-year-old house. And then the one, the one on Bedler was the sort of same thing. The bones were, the bones on the house seemed, seemed great. It seemed like it was a great investment opportunity. So we grabbed it, even though we were, we weren't looking to leave Nelson, the opportunities presented themselves, and it made sense to, to grab them, while they were essentially costing us a dollar apiece.
And will this be similar to the approach with Midtown Square, although they're obviously not all in the same cluster, but where work is getting done at the same time? And so there, is that the idea?
Yeah. So if, if you remember, like at the last work session, I said, I, I, that's when I shared the costs with you guys, because I, because we knew that we had some work that we wanted to get done right away on them. And, and so, like the one on Second Street, for example, Tim's been in there working almost every day. If you drive by it, you're approving the cost now, but there's no siding on it anymore. He's pretty much been over there whenever he has time, you know, ripping it out, gutting it, getting it ready to go. As a matter of fact, when we, when we first acquired all of them, I approved, you know, a contractor going there and essentially clear, they were all full of trash. Go in there and clear all the trash out of them before we made the decision whether or not we were going to keep them. That's included in those costs there. It was about $5,000 to clear out all those houses. And just, just to take a look at them, you couldn't understand what kind of shape they were in until you got the trash out of them. So they've been working on them. A lot of them are, are far enough along now where we're, where we're very, we've even done the asbestos abatement and the ones that needed asbestos abatement. We jumped on the little things that we could do in, in anticipation of this, just so, just as Tim had downtime, he, he jumped on them. So I think right now, you'll see him focus his attention on the one on Second Street, just because that'll be the easiest one to get done. I have a feeling he'll move on to the one on Bedler and Grand, do those two next, and then the other ones will come afterwards.
Anything else, commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaas Piga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is public hearing.
Public hearing for brownfield plan amendment and development and reimbursement agreement for Pigeon Hill Fourth Street Expansion Project Planning and Economic Development. Summary request: to hold a public hearing and approve the resolution approving and adopting the amendment to the brownfield plan, and to approve the development and reimbursement agreement. The amendments are for property owned by Pigeon Hill Brewing Company, LLC. Staff recommendation: to hold a public hearing for approval of the brownfield plan amendment for the Pigeon Hill Fourth Street Expansion Project, and approve the resolution, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution, and to approve the development and reimbursement agreement between Pigeon Hill Brewing Company, LLC, the City of Muskegon, and the City of Muskegon Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Committee recommendation: the Muskegon City Commission set the public hearing for May 22, 2018, at their May 8, 2018 meeting. Since that time, a notice of the public hearing has been sent to taxing jurisdictions. In addition, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority approved the plan amendment and the development and reimbursement agreement on May 8, 2018, and recommends that the Muskegon City Commission approve the plan amendment and development and reimbursement agreement.
Hiya, Mike.
Good evening. So this is for the new building at the former parking lot owned by the city that Pigeon Hill will be building on. It's eligible for a brownfield because of the foundry fill on-site. There's just under $500,000 in eligible expenses, and there's a 25-year payback, and that includes the 10-year IFT that's layered in there as well.
Questions for Mike? Commissioner Warren?
Have there, have there been any responses?
No, we have not heard any responses.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just wanted to get some clarification. In the packet, it indicated that the anticipation of the creation of five full-time equivalent jobs within two years of project completion. Is that a net addition? Because it also, in this case, no full-time equivalent jobs were retained as the property is currently vacant. So we know that the production facility nearby is employing people. So with the new facility, it's going to be creating five additional jobs? We're not counting the jobs at the current production facility as the five full-time equivalent?
I believe that's five new jobs. Michael?
Five net addition? Okay. Just wanted to confirm.
Is that it on the questions?
Are we going to, I see some posters over there. Are we going to get some sort of presentation?
I don't think they prepared a presentation, but if we could have someone from Pigeon Hill just bring up their rendering.
I mean, if they're here, right?
This is what the planning commission approved on last month at the planning commission meeting. meeting.
Where would you like me to speak?
Um, where is our...
Right up here, Michael?
Yeah.
Just give your name and address and give your spiel.
I don't have a spiel. I have a, I have pretty pictures.
Well, give your picture.
I can point at the pictures.
Just, just...
Michael Brower, 1665 Jefferson, Muskegon. One of the co-owners of Pigeon Hill Brewing Company, Joel and Chad are also with me, as is Andrea, so if you have, our architect, if you have questions about the pictures, direct them at her. So this is the proposed building. This right here is Shoreline Drive, so as you're coming into Muskegon down Shoreline Drive, the goal is that you'll get a building that obviously serves an industrial purpose in terms of manufacturing of alcohol, but also has other uses and has a nice warm feel to it. That's why we use the colors that we selected, as well as the brick and the combination of textures. Andrea, is there anything else you want me to say about this? Am I doing well? Thank you. Oh, yeah, sorry. I was told this picture over there.
Ike, I'll send you a picture. Oh.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Any pointed questions for Mr. Brower? No? Okay. Are there any questions or input from the public in this matter as it is a public hearing? This is the matter of the reimbursement agreement for Pigeon Hill at Fourth Street and their expansion project. If not, Commissioner?
I move we close the public hearing and approve the brownfield planned amendment and development and reimbursement agreement for the Pigeon Hill Fourth Street Expansion Project. Support?
It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaasipica, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, hold the public hearing for approval of the brownfield plan amendment for Pigeon Hill Fourth Street Expansion Project, approve the resolution, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it, and to approve the development and reimbursement agreement between Pigeon Hill Brewing Company, LLC, and the City of Muskegon and the City of Muskegon Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Any additional questions? Comments? Commissioner?
So this is the only opportunity for the public hearing, so now that's closed, correct?
That's closed.
Okay. Thank you.
That is closed. Thank you, Michael. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Best of luck.
I don't need your, I don't need your charity.
That brings us to new business.
Amendment to the zoning ordinance, Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act Overlay District, Second Reading, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, staff initiated request to amend the zoning ordinance to include a new section for the medical marijuana facilities overlay district. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation, the planning commission voted in favor, 4 to 2, of recommending to the city commission to approve the zoning ordinance amendment for the MMFLA overlay district at their February 15th meeting. Mahalski, Larson, Galvin, and Doyle voted in support. Maseid and Montgomery Keith voted in opposition. Peterson, Hovey Wright were absent. The version they approved for recommendation is slightly different than from what staff is presenting tonight, as this version allows for all types of licenses with one overlay zone, rather than restricting licenses between two separate overlay districts.
Again, this is the Second Reading. Commissioners? Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
I move we approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance related to Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, Licensing Act Overlay Districts as presented with the ordinance amendment.
It has been rec, moved by Commissioner Rensselaasipica, supported by Commissioner Warren, to approve the zoning ordinance amendment for the MMFLA overlay district. And do I have to add anything else? No. No. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Thank you. Item B under new business, please.
Concurrent with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Following Public Safety. 236 Mason Avenue, Bolt Hardware, 586 School Street, 2207 Minor Avenue. Summary request, this is to request that the city commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals, that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further request that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition, with the lowest responsible bidder, or staff may issue infractions citations to the owner, agent, or responsible party if they do not demolish the structure. Staff recommendation, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for 236 Mason Avenue, Bolt Hardware? Again, is there anyone here to speak on 236 Mason Avenue, Bolt Hardware? Is there anyone here to speak on 586 School Street? Is there anyone here to speak on 2207 Minor Avenue? I'm sorry, sir?
Yes.
Were you here to speak on which property?
2207 Minor Avenue.
Then I will entertain a motion for 236 Mason and 586 School.
I move to concur with Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish 236 Mason and 586 School Street. Support?
It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaasipica, supported by Commissioner Turquist, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' notice in order to demolish 236 Mason Avenue, Bolt Hardware, and 586 School Street. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Mission passes.
We'll be making a motion on your property that you're here to speak about first. We'll get a staff report and then we'll take your statement, okay? Can I get a motion on 2207 Minor Avenue so we can begin discussion? Commissioner Warren?
I move to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish 2207 Minor Avenue.
Support?
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, supported by Commissioner Rensselaasipica, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' notice and order to demolish 2207 Minor Avenue. And I take it you're here for a staff report on the said property.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. This was a structure fire on February 18th of this year. Fire crews responded, at which time at the conclusion of the fire, the house was basically destroyed by the fire. A notice and order was sent early April. The building was posted on April 23rd to appear at the Housing Board of Appeals. On May 3rd, the Housing Board of Appeals declared the home dangerous and a public nuisance. And at that time, the owner, that appear, is appearing today, if he is the owner. But anyways, no one actually appeared on behalf of the home. The owner has relayed information to us that he's waiting for a settlement with the insurance company, that the home cannot be repaired, and the insurance company is deeming it to be demolished. Our staff has estimated the cost repaired at $85,000. The SEV is around $32,000. And we, fire escrow was sent on 5/22, which means we don't have it yet, but we are, we are going to proceed with demolition.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Sir, if you'd just come up to the podium, give your name and address and provide your statement?
My name is Lambertus Vanderstrom. I bought the house a number of years ago, and I was surprised it burned down. I'm, I'm new to this. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do or say. I'm not a spokesman. I have assurance from the, my insurance company that they're setting aside money for the demolition of the house, but so far I have not received any money from them. Michigan Fire claims has, has helped us in the processing with the insurance company, but I haven't heard anything from them lately either, so I don't know if they're doing anything to help me get the money, get it demolished. Otherwise, it would have been done already. My hands are tied because I don't know what the insurance company is doing. I know that they, they did set up, we moved into a home on Hackley Avenue. They set up the deposit and rent for the home. They have paid for another thing, but I have not heard anything. And I did see in one of the papers that there was supposed to be money set aside for the demolition of the house, but I haven't received no funding from them.
Okay. There is.
Chief, okay. Chief will address that question. He is right. Under Public Act 495, we have requested the escrow funds, and the funds will come from the insurance company, and we will hold those in escrow, and the home will be demolished with the insurance money to assure it gets demolished and to get, to assure that we are paid. And then the, the remaining funds that, between him and the insurance company will be then given to him.
Okay.
We will only take what, from the escrow funds, what it takes to demolish the property.
So, did you...
Make it under state law.
Okay. So, did you understand that portion of what the chief just said?
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I, I know the house should be demolished.
Right.
I hope they don't affect me to come up with money. I don't have money for it.
No, that... Insurance company gives us the money for you, and the remaining money goes to you. And if we don't use all the demolition money, that also goes back to you. You're not responsible for the cost. The insurance company's going to reimburse us.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
All right. Does that answer the biggest portion of your concern?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know when it's going to happen.
Oh.
Staff will stay in contact with the individual. Jay Paulson is, is working closely with this case, and my secretary also, Liz Parker. So we will keep you kind of informed as to what's going on. Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner?
So just to clarify, the city hasn't received the money for the demolition either, so we're waiting for whatever process the insurance company goes through?
Right. There is some kind of, sometimes there's a delay through this, through the process, but we, we fully believe that the funds are coming our way.
And then we will demolish it once we receive those funds.
And that's correct. And also, this is, this home, because of the significance of the fire damage, we have received a lot of complaints from the neighbors, which is not uncommon for a home that burns because when it starts getting warmer, the humidity, the smells tend to leave the property. So we do want to get this down as fast as we can.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions from the Commissioners. Okay? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Thank you. Under new business, item C, please.
Request to rezone 731 Yuba Street, 205 East Muskegon Avenue, 287 East Muskegon Avenue, and 225 Eastern Avenue, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, request to rezone these properties from B4 General Business to I1 Light Industrial by City Park, LLC. The applicant is seeking the rezoning in order to develop a food processing center. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the rezonings. Committee recommendation, the planning commission voted in favor, 5-0, with four members absent, recommending approval of the proposed zoning changes at their May 21st, 2018 meeting. Mahalski, Doyle, Galvin, Montgomery, Keith, and Peterson voted in favor. Maseid, Hood, Larson, and Hovey Wright were absent.
Anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Warren?
I move to recommend approval of the rezonings at 731 Yuba Street, 205 East Muskegon Avenue, 287 East Muskegon Avenue, and 225 Eastern Avenue.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, supported by Commissioner Rensselaasipica, to approve the rezonings at 731 Yuba Street, 205 East Muskegon Avenue, 287 East Muskegon Avenue, and 225 Eastern Avenue. Here for report?
Well, I'd just like to say the planning commission had a special meeting yesterday. They did vote in favor of it unanimously, 5 to 0. It's a pretty straightforward request. It's rezoning to Light Industrial so that they may develop their food processing center. We did send out notice to everybody within 300 feet of the property, and we did not hear any comments from the public.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mike? Mr. Warren?
Do you know about how many people that would be, 300 feet within?
Yes.
Forty-five?
Yeah. And that's property owners and tenants.
Okay.
Commissioner Turquist?
B4 covered the, the market that, that was there. Light Industrial, what, any concern about noise level?
Um, you know, I guess with any industrial company, that's a potential, but everything they're doing is enclosed into a building. And the way that they've shown the design, we believe that it's going to do everything it can to not disrupt the neighbors. We obviously have the one street that has some, some newer homes on it, but everything else is pretty much wetlands and some businesses and, you know, there's a dirt road. There's really not too much around there, other than the houses to the south.
Up the hill.
Up the hill, yeah.
If you could just give a quick overview of what they're planning, I mean, I think I know 70, I don't, so many thousand square feet and for food processing.
Yeah, I should probably have the applicant speak. They're not here. They're not here? Okay. Well, this part of the process, we don't really get into all of that. I mean, things could still change, so that's not something really that we do that with. It will have to go to the planning commission, though, because it's over, well over a 10,000 square foot addition, so that's going to have to go to the planning commission. We anticipate that, I think, within the next month.
But they've given some idea that it's going to be a food processing...
Yes. Food processing center. Yeah. So U shaped building, Frank?
If I could, it's essentially like, almost like a food processing incubator is what I would describe it as. So they're looking to bring in, you know, some, some tenants that are looking to either A, start, start a food processing sort of a business, or grow a food processing sort of business. So for example, if there's a, there is a company in town, for example, that, that does food processing like Kohl's, maybe they could expand and use space over there for freezers and things like that. And then, so their, their goal is to access the growers and the food entrepreneurs in, you know, in West Michigan, and provide them resources to start their businesses or grow their businesses. So the way that, that it's designed now is, it's about 70,000 square feet in, in Phase 1 and 50,000 square feet in Phase 2, but they're all subdivided, so if somebody could come in, for example, I could come in and rent 5,000 square feet, but the mayor could rent 15,000 or 20,000 square feet. So the building has kind of like, like movable walls, so that you can rent exactly what you need for your process and then expand as, as you need be. They're also planning on having educational opportunities and retail opportunities there. So if you had a business that was food processing, you could sell your product from the site. And then, you know, they're looking to partner with an educational provider that could help assist the food processing startups with, with, I guess, the technical assistance that they might need as you're working through their, through their startup or their growth. So it's a little, I want to say it's a little fluid now, because I don't know who their tenants will be, but they, they indicate they've been getting a lot of interest from they indicate they've been getting a lot of interest from a lot of different types of end users, from startups all the way to well-established companies that are looking for low-cost temporary growth opportunities.
I think one of the intriguing things that was stated is how they are partnering and interacting with Michigan State University, which is continuing to build their presence in town, even with Community College with their agricultural and farming management program. But they would anticipate MSU hopefully having onsite presence. And of course, we know of the, what started out as the food hub concept, growing out of our own market, and, you know, 242 now, it's the West Michigan Shoreline Food Processing Initiative. And even though it may seem, on the face of it, you know, smaller scale, I think this is, you know, an opportunity for someone to put their money where their mouth is, because we've been talking for some time about, you know, centering food processing here in Muskegon County. And I think this gives us innovative and progressive means to do it. And we return an agricultural-based activity to what historically had been agriculturally-based, you know, piece of property since 1964. And the proposal, you know, was very, very strong on accommodating and being aware of, you know, the neighborhood needs and being a good neighbor, so on and so forth. But I think from the planning commission position, it was seeing that real possibility for these ongoing, you know, interweavings of all the other initiatives that we see here as we look at urban farming and, you know, urban commercial farming expansion. We'll have an expansion in our own neighborhood. But, you know, when we... As soon as you put the term "industrial" in there, you know, first thing people get in their mind is, you know, smokestack, and that's not really the case with this. And light industrial, you know, can coexist really well, and some of the discussion was, well, you know, look at how many neighborhoods, even Commissioner Johnson's and I, you know, the stamping plant at Knoll, CW Marsh, Kohl's. Of course, we don't mind that smell, you know, it just makes you want to have spaghetti. But the potential here for drawing in additional interest and really putting that focus on this up-and-coming type of industry within the city, I think would really, I don't know if it'll put us on the map, but we can take the bull by the horn. And again, Kitchen 242 isn't always large enough to accommodate some of our entrepreneurs. This potentially could. And of course, the port and the new owner came up at the former B.C. Cobb. And who knows? Getting into this type of initiative could, you know, help facilitate and continue to focus on the potential for agricultural processing and manufacturing to, you know, move out of our hopefully enhanced port facility. So, that was some of the bantering back and forth yesterday. So, anyway, take it as you will. Any other questions for Mike? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a big fan of this project, the concept. Like you, Mr. Mayor, I recognize that it builds off of a lot of the work that's already being done in the city, and it's complementary to other initiatives that are ongoing. And I think that's just a great concept and initiative, and I'm excited for it to happen. I am a bit concerned about rezoning it to I1, given the other use-by-rights that are permitted within I1. You know, if this development doesn't pan out, alternative industrial activity happening right next to a neighborhood, or in the future, long-term, this project happens, and 10 years from now, it's, for whatever reason, cease operations and other industrial activities happen there, you know, whether it be machine shops and metal finishing shops, or metal casting and alloying, or crematories, or outdoor kennels, or lumber mills would even be permitted as a use-by-right in an I1 area. So, what I am wondering is, what are other options available to accommodate this food processing center without rezoning it to I1? Let me just start there.
Well, we already have a zoning ordinance that allows for it in I1, so this is the recommendation by staff to do that. I don't think it's appropriate to try to sneak it in a different way. We do have the PUD process, but that's usually for when we're trying to make accommodations for several different types of variances, building height regulations, setbacks, things like that. None of those are necessary for this, so we look at this as just any other type of rezoning request.
And actually, and we've already had some... And as to why a special use would not be necessarily appropriate for the B4, but a PUD would provide you a variance for the B4 district to accommodate food processing. So, what are the difficulties or challenges with doing a planned unit development for this site so that we can maintain the B4 zoning, the general business, while permitting food processing at the site? You know, what are the problems or challenges from a staff's perspective or from the developer's perspective? You know, they don't own this property right now. We still own this property. So, what's encumbering them or us for moving forward with a planned unit development?
Well, a planned unit development is reserved for when other accommodations can't be made. The accommodation can be made to just rezon it. It's already allowed as a principal use. It's the first one listed in I1. We're being straightforward about this. That's what they want to do, and it's an industrial district, and I don't see a reason to do that for a PUD.
Yeah. Well, we provide a variance from the general business, so why would we do a PUD elsewhere that, you know, such as the residential, the new homes right off of Lake Shore Drive, do a PUD there where it could have just been accommodated in a residential zone? So, I mean, PUDs have, do exist elsewhere where they could have been accommodated with another zoning classification.
What homes were you talking about?
Territorial point.
No, not Territorial Point. Right off...
Marina.
No. It's, what's it, Willow Bay or whatever, what's that called? What?
Windflower Bay?
Yeah, I think...
One of her points?
It's right off of where the fork, near the fork, over on Lake Shore Drive, between...
Oh.
It's really expensive.
Oh, Buckland Bay Estates?
Yes. Yeah, there's a PUD there to accommodate those homes.
I wasn't here when they did that development. I'm not sure why. The PUD, I think, seems a little odd, really, that everything fits within a R1 zoning designation. It seems like that's probably what they would have done. I don't know. I'd have to look at the file.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm just wondering, because a PUD could be used in this regard. There's nothing that's legally saying it's impermissible. But short of that, let's assume we do rezon this to I1, which very likely will happen regardless of how I vote. But what can you tell me or reassure me that it isn't just going to be changed into outdoor kennels or lumber mill a few years from now? What steps are in place in planning that could help prevent that?
I guess it would be the same as any other business. If this project fell through and it never occurred, I would suggest as staff that we rezon it so that that doesn't happen. The project goes through, only goes by 10 years, and I think we would have to look at it from staff again about what the best approach would be, and possibly that's a rezoning, and possibly that's talking to new interested companies that are willing to propose something else.
So, if it moves forward, because typically, once you zone something, that it's grandfathered if it's an active use. So, it would only be grandfathered if it's a food processing. If we, food processing shuts down, and we say, well, we're going to rezon it back to B4 General Business, the only ongoing non-conforming activity that can happen there is food processing, not in the other I1 industrial use-by-rights?
That would be my interpretation, and I'm guessing maybe our attorney may think so as well.
Well, I think it's problematic to try and render an opinion to what the law would require 10 years from now, or 20 or 50.
What does the law say presently?
It can be, it would be able to be used as an... If it's rezoned to I1, the property can be used for what's permitted in I1.
But if it were to be, say, the law's the same now as it is a year from now, and there's a food processing center there, and we rezon it back to B4 because the food processing center has gone defunct?
We will end up in a major lawsuit.
But it's gone defunct, and we've changed it back to B4.
It has gone defunct?
We're saying at this...
I mean, the problem, Commissioner's...
I know we're digging the hypotheticals, but I want to understand what the law is today as it applies to a future scenario in which we've got a food processing center, we were making this change to I1 to accommodate a food processing center. A year from now, it's gone defunct. They've closed their doors. We decide we want to revert back to B4 General Business. So, what is the non-conforming uses that would be grandfathered going forward? Would it just be food processing?
What has the property owner done to either indicate that they intend to continue using the property for I1, or the property owner has taken affirmative action indicating a desire to do something else with the property?
It should be their law-for-right, because it's a use-by-right. As long as it's any of the other permitted I1. Unless the property owner agreed to...
Or took affirmative action.
To the rezoning.
But if I, for instance, own a restaurant and a place that a restaurant is located, and I close my restaurant down, and I keep marketing it as a restaurant, looking for a restaurant, it can continue to be a restaurant.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Can it be any of the other...
Yeah.
...use-by-rights other than a restaurant?
Potentially, depending what other...
So, say, hypothetically, there's a strip club that's permitted as a use-by-right in that same zone. Could they, if they're marketing it as a restaurant, 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 we change the zoning so restaurants and strip clubs aren't allowed anymore, could they sell it to someone else that wanted to use it as a strip club, even though it's non-conforming use and they're grandfathered?
But if I continue to market it as a use for an I1, it continues to have those rights to be used as an I1.
Okay. So, it's all about the marketing of it?
It's all about the facts at the time.
Yeah. So, as long as they're saying, in general, I1, yeah, then it'd be permitted.
I think if we have one thing going for us with your concern, of course, things can change, is the individual and that individual's intent and commitment, you know, to the city, to the downtown, and to this type of initiative. So, it isn't anybody we don't know.
Yeah. And I have no doubt that this person would do us...
I'm just saying, you know...
Do us wrong, and would follow through on his commitment on this project. My concern is just more of long-term and unintended consequences. And if there were alternative to get around it so that we can accommodate this development without necessarily rezoning it and creating all these industrial use-by-rights there, that would be my preferable approach.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Warren?
So, with the construction and with this project, is this involving, and you might not know the answer, but, I mean, is this involving grant funding from some of these initiatives and from some of these educational institutions, or it's all private, or we don't know?
I'm not aware.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's privately funded. What those institutions would bring would be leases and rent money and, you know, their own investments into their lease space. But all indications are that it's privately funded. We haven't heard of attempts to bring in, you know, grant money to do this.
Commissioner?
When is the expectation that this developer's going to be purchasing the property? I mean, have they... There hasn't been an offer yet, as I understand it. We're not anywhere near to closing. Is there an urgency to rezon this right now? Would staff, and this can be a question for city manager, would you be willing to have that conversation with the property owner of pursuing a PUD to permit food processing at the site rather than rezoning it to I1?
I mean, we talk with this individual all the time. I mean, I can definitely bring it up to him. I know he was adamant about getting this done now when he went through the process. And I think actually, did he pay to actually rezon our property?
Yeah, we had a special meeting just because of this, so...
Yeah. I mean, he's interested in having the property rezoned, and I won't put words in his mouth, but, you know, they have a goal to do this, and that is what makes the most sense right now. It's really hard if you do say exactly what you're saying right now, is let's allow him to do this one light industrial use that he's going to build this building for and only that, because there is a chance that it doesn't, that doesn't work. But there are plenty of other light industrial uses in there that are very, you know, they're very capable of coexisting in neighborhoods, and a lot of them used to do it for many years, and a lot of them, some of them even do it now here in the community. From our standpoint, what we're looking at is, how do we redevelop this difficult-to-develop property in a way that gives back to the community? And this seems like a great way to do it. And if the only concern is that if it fails and we zone it light industrial, that it could become something else, I think that that's kind of a risk to take, because if it does fail and it can't become anything else, I can drive around and show you guys plenty of former small industrial buildings that are in areas that are no longer zoned for, and I can probably show you, every single one of them is vacant or being used to store somebody's hot rod or boat in. They're just not, you know, when you take that away, it makes it very difficult for the next use, even though the next use, we're concerned about what that next use might be, because we have this idea of what light industrial might look like. But the private reality is, we probably could find plenty of light industrial uses in there that would be, that would coexist in the neighborhoods very well. I think of Norchek, those folks that were trying to expand, and Nelson Neighborhood over by Park Street Storage. And they've been trying to expand and wanting to expand, but their property is no longer zoned for what originally, they've been in there for decades. And it's, they know when they leave that property, which is why they probably stay there, it will be nothing but a vacant building that they can't sell, and they can't repurpose because of that zoning constraint. I think the smart thing for us to do is get it rezoned in a way that it can have multiple potential uses long-term, and then we do our best to make sure that they can be successful. If they're not, that we help get the right people in there that will coexist with the neighborhood very well, and just trust that we got the right people and staff to do it. Because actually, you know, John mentioned that right at the meeting. He said, "I know that I can't put a stamping plant in here. Let's just be clear. I don't, you know, I know what kind of noise they make. I don't want to live by one. I'd never make anybody else live by one." You know, so he was very cognizant of those sorts of things. And I know the mayor said, "Things can change." And maybe he's not the owner 20 years from now that we have to worry about, but 20 years from now is 20 years, you know, from now. The important thing for me is getting something sustainable in there today, so I can have the conversation with him. I just have a feeling that he's looking at holistically and going, "Yeah, but if I commit to that, what do I do if it turns out I just built a brand-new light industrial building that, and the food processors never come? I still need to recoup this X number million-dollar investment, so I got to look at these other light industrial uses, and I got to be able to do it reasonably quickly without coming for rezonings and stuff like that."
Mm-hmm. Okay. Commissioner?
Thank you for that feedback. Those are all good points and reasonable assessment as to why you may not be interested in a PUD, and would rather have the flexibility of the I1. I do have some concerns about a few of the use-by-rights there, but I'm a fan of this proposed development. I'm a fan of the developer and the other works and investments he's made in our community. I will, one, definitely have faith that he will follow through on this project and not do something else, and hopefully, we don't have problems down the road. Problems are kind of mitigated by the fact that it's only residential on one side, and so when problems, if problems do arise, it will be relatively limited. So, coming around, and I can support this rezoning.
Very good. Yeah, there's always risks, you know, like even our neighborhood with that new initiative and potentially hundreds of people on three shifts, so, you know. But yeah, you see what you can do for, you know, the benefit of the local economy and drawing in, you know, new folks into the community.
Any other questions or input? Commissioner?
So, this has been, this project has been working alongside Kitchen 242 and our markets, and, I mean, as far as, because Kitchen 242 hasn't been at capacity. It's not like we've, this is just a different type of facility to potentially complement that market?
Absolutely. We have some, we have vendors that come in and they use the kitchen, but they can't leave their items there. They get a little cage that they can lock it up in. And some of the bigger vendors, this makes more sense for them to have their own space that they don't have to do that.
Sure.
It's almost like a progressionary opportunity, too. And I think this is really, even in addition to the food hub concept, the bigger food hub concept that's going along, it's all just this idea that food agribusiness is growing around here, and there's a number of initiatives, and they're not, they're not, they're not working against each other. They're all actually working on very important pieces of it, and they don't have to be next door to each other, or, you know, or even both, even all in... door to each other or, you know, or even both, even all in Muskegon necessarily.
I'd like to get as much in town as we can.
If I remember from when the incubator kitchen was kind of being developed, I think the closest ones were maybe Hart and Grand Rapids potentially. Is it a similar type of market for a facility like this? Does anyone, I don't know if, do you know? I mean, are they, the closest one is Traverse City, the, I mean, there's two in the state. Does anyone know that type of information?
Yeah. I think they're expecting that they'll be able to pull business from places like Hart. Hart in particular, I think, was one that they brought up where they thought that they could, that they could service people that are, that are going that far north, you know, 45 minutes to an hour north that don't really want to but don't really have an, you know, another option locally. So, yeah, we think this is unique to Muskegon. And the big unique part about it is not that you can't buy warehouse space and do it yourself is that it'll be so flexible. So the same space could work for three different people in three different ways and it can be very temporary and people can come and go. But I think the component that makes it even more special is this idea that Michigan State or an institution like that would come in and provide people with support.
Great. Thanks.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rentsch Pacifica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Thank you. Under any other business, Director Mike Sell, could you give us an update on McGrath Park and its effect on frisbee golf and our concern about the blight?
Disc golf.
Sorry.
Let's use the proper terms. Sure. We did have, I believe his name is Dr. David Roberts from Michigan State University, come to McGrath Park and do a walk-around with some of our staff. I was not present there, but I have received an update from staff. He agreed with our initial reaction or initial action to close the disc golf course. And he, what he found is that for the most part, we have mature oak trees that when the discs hit the bark, it's not really that detrimental to them. There are a few, are they called fairways? So there are a few that, there are some lower, newer branches that are getting impacted by the disc golf. And so he suggested some ways that we can address that so that there isn't, isn't a risk to those trees. We have asked for a written report from him, which I don't have yet, but it sounds like we have some ways that we can protect ourselves and keep the disc golf course at that park. So we're, and then, of course, there are still timeframes that we can do these things to the trees. So what we're trying to do is find the best way to handle both of them, but we think that we'll be able to do that.
Okay. So a lot of timeframe would depend on the receipt of the report and going over the recommendations and...
Right. And then the timeframe that we would be able to kind of do the mitigating measures.
Right. And of course, there'll be cost involved in that as well.
Of course.
Of course. Okay. Any questions for the director at this juncture? Commissioner Johnson?
Do we know when we're going to get the report? Do we have a ETA?
I didn't happen to ask that question. I wouldn't think it would take terribly long. It's been probably a week since he came to visit the park, so I wouldn't think it would be a lot longer. I know he's busy talking to lots of people about oak wilt because I've seen videos on YouTube, but I don't have a date for you at this point.
Well, I'm pleased and relieved with initial assessment at least that we can restore disc golfing at McGrath Park.
Right.
Hopefully, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'll wait to get the report and see what mediation steps we need to take. But I'm sure you're not prepared to, we, I won't even ask because we don't have the report, so I won't put you on the spot in terms of when we can put the baskets back, but hopefully, yeah, as soon as possible.
Yeah. I would hope by the time we have another commission meeting that I would have some additional information. So that will be my goal.
Yeah. A little bit more concrete of timeline of what we're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else for the director? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other business to bring before the commission before we go to public comment period? I did receive a couple of nice notes from Senator Gary Peters, who indicated he was here some weeks ago and enjoyed his visit to Muskegon and really sees that Muskegon's on the move and he's glad he had the chance to seal, see and feel that momentum. He was here to specifically look at the potential for quarter initiatives, but while we had him here, we took him up on top of High Point Flats and watched his jaw drop, so that was good. Had a good time with him. He also wanted to congratulate us on winning the 2018 Strongest Town Contest. He knows that the work of so many great individuals here continues to ensure Muskegon has a healthy local economy and successfully physically sound future. And all that so many people are doing is worth the recognition of so many more. And again, he wanted to congratulate us all, citizens and agencies alike, on the hard work that we're doing to continue to build our home here in Muskegon. At this time, we open up for public comment. Individuals are invited up to address the commission with concerns or questions. Often as not, we don't have immediate answers, but if you stay behind, we can link you up with the appropriate staffer or you can exchange contact numbers with any of us. Each individual is given three minutes. When you do come forward, we just ask you to give your name and address for the clerk's records and we take it from there. So first up, who had a request was, I believe it's Heather Tart?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Heather Tart. I live at 277 South Brooks, Muskegon, Michigan, 49442. I am here to discuss disc golf, more the future of disc golf. I recently, we, I work at Heights Elementary, one of the Heights Elementary schools. And earlier this year, at the Project Focus After School Program, one of our disc golf ladies was employed and brought disc golf into the school for the children to start learning how to play. And when she received a better position elsewhere, she left and unfortunately, disc golf went with her. And it wasn't until the baskets got pulled out of McGrath that I realized that I myself have a little bit of responsibility as a disc golfer to make sure that we grow into that community. Okay? They love it over there. They think it's great. They love the, they teach them the, the whole nine yards, throwing the disc, hold on to it, the right form, everything. It's wonderful for them. Unfortunately, I feel like the oak wilt is very damaging to the disc golf community and our ability to grow into other places. You're hurting us as a community by attaching something to disc golf that's like a plague. We can't go into other communities the way we are here if they are afraid that we're going to carry a disease that kills all their trees. All right? We can't do that. It doesn't work like that. It's not me you're hurting. It's not the disc golfers in this room that you're hurting as adults. It's the young ladies sitting in that, in that row right there that you're hurting. The girl in the green beat me last week. She had like four strokes better on the game than I did last week. You're hurting her. You're hurting the girl next to her. You're hurting the kids in the heights by attaching disc golf to oak wilt. By, because people don't, people don't want, people are not going to want, when you put it online, in today's technology, when you put it online, when it gets on the news, the general public doesn't research. They automatically go to, "We carry it on our shoes, on our bags, on our frisbees." And that's not how this works. It doesn't transfer like that. But the general public will take what they've read and instead of, instead of asking questions, they're going to jump to their own conclusions. I think it's dangerous. I, I think it's dangerous. That's really all I have. Thank you for listening to me.
Absolutely. Thank you, Heather. Kara Schrader, we're off in my neighborhood.
My name is Kara Schrader and I live at 933 Ireland Avenue, Muskegon, Michigan. I spoke a little bit last meeting on behalf of the Ladies Disc Golf League and since then I have become very involved in researching oak wilt and with the PDGA, which is the Professional Disc Golf Association and many members of arborists, experts, communities, other communities and all that. So I have learned a lot. And first of all, I want to thank all you guys, you know, for your service and dedication. I know it's not always easy to make decisions for a whole community. It's a really hard thing to do and discerning truth from rumor can be very hard, especially when people have agendas that you don't know about. Secondly, I'd like to point out how quietly and peacefully these two 10 and 11-year-old girls over here have sat through this very boring meeting. Okay?
Boring? Yeah, it is boring.
Disc golf is a direct result of that because of the dedication, the patience and the determination and focus that they have learned from the sport. Okay. Now, here's my written statement. I am here on behalf of the disc golf community of Muskegon and also as a representative of the sport of disc golf worldwide. We, the disc golf community, are lovers of the outdoors. We are not just disc golfers. We are members of environmental and civic groups. The fact is, we spend more time in the park than almost any other stakeholder. We are there every single day, rain, snow or sunshine. These, these beautiful trees are absolutely essential to our love of the game. When we became aware that this threat to our beloved McGrath Park, we were shocked and terribly concerned. Truly, no one wants to find the solution to this problem more than us. And we do understand the city of Muskegon's need for due diligence. In such situations, it is tempting to reach for extreme solutions, even though we're not certain that they are necessary. Our goal is to do all we can to assist in the exploration of this issue and to also emphasize the fact that complete removal of a valuable disc golf course is not without significant cost to the community. An extreme example, but imagine that we close down all the roads until we figured out how to reduce auto accidents. Effective, but costly. Here is what we propose for your consideration. Let's go out to the course and assess the trees. On some holes, I expect that we will find there are no trees that have wounds from disc. This has to do with the design of a particular hole. When released, a disc may be flying very fast, but that speed deteriorates quickly. So a tree right in front of a tee pad may be struck and scarred pretty frequently. But a tree further down the fairway may never be wounded. Also, the age, type and bark thickness of a tree are all factors to consider. There may be ways the trees can be protected in order to avoid further contact with any possibly susceptible trees. Please remember that disc golfers never want to hit a tree. Our goal is to go around the tree and into the basket. Many of us disc golfers have now joined together in an effort to work with the city officials and contribute in any way possible. We are in the process of forming a committee that will represent the Muskegon disc golf community and promote the sport of disc golf worldwide via monitoring courses, working with city leaders, education and charitable works. We will continue to fight to protect the sport that has given so much to anyone that has ever played it and to the communities involved. The question is, does the city of Muskegon want disc golf and are they willing to work with us towards a mutually beneficial solution to any true issues that may arise? Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
And I would say yes, yes. And if there was a third one in there, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So I have these three down. I know I'm not trying to be mean, but if the city parks commission was truly caring about the trees and oak wilt, a lot of that would not be going on. And those are pictures of McGrath Park and they're not caused by discs.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your research and all your efforts. I appreciate it. Ms. Schrader?
Yeah. Thank you.
I would ask that people continue to keep in mind, there isn't anybody up here that's out to get you. You mentioned ulterior motives. I don't know what that is. The only thing that I knew was that there was a concern here several weeks ago and we wanted the time to get our heads around it. We're getting our heads around it. We want to mitigate this. We want to get the course back up. We're moving in that direction. But we, remember, we have multiple responsibilities to multiple constituents and multiple levels. All right? But we're not trying to leave you out. All right? And we're not the only municipality in the state of Michigan that, you know, took this temporary measure. There was one before us.
One other. There was one.
Right. So, you know, one north of us in this county. But again, I want to see it opened as much as you do because I got this adult kid of mine that loves the sport. And I love watching people play it because I'm no athlete, you know? I'm all thumbs. So, but I, but I want to get that, get that out, that I ain't, I ain't, you know, gunning for you. But again, we have multiple fronts here that we face and we have to address it as fairly as possible. And we want to get you up and playing ASAP. Mr. Gary Bird?
Feral Major?
Very good.
That's because my mother is a doe.
So my name is Feral Major, Muskegon County. I have written something here because I'm not really a public speaker, but I'd like to share some thoughts with you. Why are we here today? Well, for a million reasons apparently that I didn't even know about existed in Muskegon. First of all, I'd like to thank Muskegon Township, city of Muskegon, parks for allowing us to utilize the beautiful property of McGrath for a disc golf course. I've been around the disc golf scene for several years and McGrath was one of the first places I played in organized league. As a disc golfer, I know that enjoying and protecting nature is an important part of what we love to do. It has been an honor to be a part of the growth of disc golf in this area, in Muskegon County and all over Michigan. I have seen how disc golf directly affects communities with, when a park chooses to add a course and increase the recreation and family fun such as McGrath Park has provided. I can speak for myself and many others in saying that disc golf is a great way to get outside, to enjoy nature, to get some exercise in the process. I have told many people about this awesome place and McGrath and other courses and how it's a great addition to the various courses that are available in West Michigan. Historically, McGrath is where many disc golfers had their first taste of the sport and for many, it has made a major impact in their lives. Recently, at a new course, which you described north of us, Fruitland Township, I learned that there is a group who is fighting to close the course already. I have seen the oak wilt disease presentation. I have read about the issue for myself and I am concerned about how disc golf as a community, as a sport, as individuals is under attack. I have heard and read statements of those who speak out against disc golf and have seen and heard misleading arguments meant to convince members of the community that disc golf is the cause of naturally occurring disease such as oak wilt. I understand like the members on the board here are not out to get disc golfers, but I believe there are interests who just want to close the course and oak wilt has become the argument. Furthermore, it's kind of upsetting for a lot of us. It seems that there, now it seems in an attempt to make it appear that they are concerned about the parks, this propaganda has been distributed beyond Fruitland Township. I have seen photos that were taken and it has been implied that disc golf discs did extreme damage to trees and even the disc golfers are intentionally destructive. Some of these photos were not even related to disc golf course in any way and there was no proof whatsoever what caused the tree to be damaged, wounded or appear diseased. In the case of McGrath Park, many of the old growth oak trees in the park have thick coarse bark that I do not believe could be penetrated by a plastic flying disc. This bark could, however, be damaged by deliberately hitting it with a hatchet, a saw, an axe, as one of the oak wilt presentations shown. Over the past several years, I have observed... This bark could however, be damaged by deliberately hitting it with a hatchet, a saw, an axe, as one of the oak wilt presentations shown. Over the past several years, I have observed naturally occurring winds, lightning and the like that have left the park with trees and limbs down, many of which stayed there for weeks, sometimes longer. I understand that the parks commission may be understaffed, underfunded, but I bring this up because the destruction of a single thunderstorm can cause in the park far outweighs the damage a flying disc could, could do with a small nick in the, in the bark. This seems obvious and reasonable to most and makes you wonder why disc golf is being named the cause of the disease, the enemy of the park, when there are so many other possible causes.
You got one more minute, Farrell.
Okay. As a community of disc golfers, we are left to defend against such outrageous claims and lose access to a course such as McGrath, which has been there for almost 20 years. It is clear that this group will go to any length to give the impression that disc golf is the problem and use any means of deception to cause others to take a stand with them. I believe this is wrong and it reminds me of the corruption that exists in the world when those with wealth can sway decisions of those who do not understand or have been given enough information. I'll skip ahead. This park is a great opportunity for many to come together, provide the community with a great way to enjoy a beautiful park while educating the public about the importance of preserving nature. It is my hope that necessary steps will be taken to seek professionals hired by the township or by the city of Muskegon to give an accurate assessment of how we can work together on this and continue to grow the interest in this amazing park. Thank you again for allowing the disc golf community an opportunity to show you that we have and will be good stewards of the property you have entrusted to us.
Thank you. We don't doubt you at all. You bring up good points, you know, size of staff, everything else. We try to get to things, you know, as far as our forestry department as soon as we can. And we, and the men and women work very hard at that, our horticulturalist. And, you know, we're committed to the, the preservation as I know you are of our thousand acres of open recreational park lands, which is massive when you consider a city our size and almost three miles of beach. So we're, we're always scrambling and trying to do the best we can. And again, your situation's caught up in all the elements that you mentioned. Storm damage, everything else. That came out in the reports that we saw as well. So it's, you're not the it thing. You're part of looking in the aggregate of, you know, potential issues. You're not a problem. You know, the oak wilt is, but what, what do we all do, you know, together to make sure we mitigate it in the same time, you know, preserve your sport and your enjoyment of what the city of Muskegon has to, you know, offer, you know, citizens here and throughout Muskegon County and beyond. Mr. Donald Jensen?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Three minutes.
Okay. To speak about McGrath Park and oak wilt again. I did speak to Dr. Roberts yesterday extensively. He was driving in his car. Frankly, I couldn't get him to hang up. He indicated McGrath Park is a low to no risk area for oak wilt. And that the situation at Nestrum Park in comparing that to McGrath are at one end of each, at the end of the spectrum. Nestrum's over here, McGrath's over here. Reason for that is the age of the oak trees. They're almost 200 years old at McGrath and he just didn't see the damage. There's some damage to softwood trees down below, but that's, that doesn't include oak wilt. So they're two different situations and we're, we were a little upset that we felt this was triggered by Nestrum. And the removal of the basket seemed to be before anyone really knew what was going on. And so it was kind of a backward approach to it. We get the caution and precautions are always wise, but if you don't do your due diligence beforehand, the amount of hours that took, it took to take out the baskets could have been used to, used for the light pruning that he suggested on certain fairways. So there's not a lot of, not a lot of branches that have to come down. He indicated hole one, hole six and a few others. And he said on the phone, the park could be back in next week, provided the forestry department isn't backlogged. And I know they are a year out. So it depends on what priorities put on this, but it's not removal of trees or extensive branch removal. He also said that he saw more damage at Nestrum in one year than he had seen at McGrath for 19 years. So that's, that's pretty much what he said and I'm glad that somebody like that came over because one thing I learned, I've talked to people in Wisconsin, professors at the University of Wisconsin at Madison, nobody, none of those people know anything about a disc. And if they haven't seen the, the field or the grounds, they can't make an honest assessment. So each case has to be looked at and somebody needs to come out to the field. And that probably should have been done, not probably, certainly should have been done before any removal prompted by the situation at Nestrum. And that's, that's muddied and there's a lot of factors that go into that. So that's all I have to say tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission at this time? If not? Yeah, that was it? Oh. Commissioner Warren?
I'm moved we go into closed session and have bathroom break.
For the purpose of?
To discuss negotiations, contract negotiations.
It's part.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Renssensipica to go into closed session to discuss contract negotiations.
As part of the collective bargaining agreement.
As part of the collective bargaining agreement. You got that? Roll call please.
Commissioner Renssensipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.